States of America. Republic, we stand one nation, under God, indivisible, ever and ever.
I just want to mention Nancy has always accuses me of starting to pledge too soon and she just kicked my cup over to slow me down. So I that's why she was smirking there. So I realized what she had done. Thank you, everyone. Welcome. We all start off with announcements and presentations. Township manager Ray Palmer will give some updates. Ray?
Test. Happy holidays to everybody. Healthy. And exciting 2025 year. We jump into the next one there. Just going to follow our normal format. I don't know why it's Scott. You do a great job. I don't know why if it's if it's the volume of someone up front. Okay, this is where the township is is at right now. I'm going to walk this way just because it doesn't buzz as much. So we're at 111% right now for revenue and 87% of our expenses for at 92% of the year. Everything that you have heard me say before is continuing EIT continues to be strong. One thing that happened is which is public knowledge.
Okay.
Township had the largest real estate transaction that it's ever had. I can't. Nobody can seem to see if there's one bigger. But the whirlpool building sold in November. It was in the in the paper. It was noted $141 million. So that is. I call that one of those. It doesn't happen very often for that that kind of a transaction. So that obviously drives the real estate transfer. So that I would call that an anomaly candidly. I'm not sure we're going to see that happen ever again at that large for a long time. We continue to also exceed where we are in the on the interest that we've had in our investments, which has been a great thing for us to continue to roll them over. When you add the EIT, real estate transfer permits are up because we've received a couple of commercial permits. Right now, which we'll talk about later in the board agenda. We're we're gonna we're gonna be in a good place in terms of the 2024 year. So you know, hats off again to the staff. Hats off to everybody that has done so much work. There's tons of work that go behind when we talk about permits, inspections, paperwork, plan reviews, there's it. It's a lot. So staff does a just a really, really great job. Go ahead, Scott. Excellent. It's okay. All right, we've showed this before. I'm only going to touch upon two things that are different this time. We received a permit, the Rite Aid up in Wurtzville Road. If you know that the Dollar General has put a permit in for that Rite Aid. So that that came in in November. And then I've talked about the whirlpool building that sold for $141 million. So we've always noted, but I just want to identify lastly, some of the grants on the right hand side that I've shared before. That that is that is grant money that the the township is in need of for infrastructure and traffic signals and a whole host of things. And so that's some of the work the staff has done to obtain that money to support the needs of the community. Would you go to the next one, Willa? In 2025, we're going to apply for a minimum $9.1 million in grants. We've talked about these grants before, an LSA grant for Woods Drive, the multimodal grant for the Carlisle Pike, the PennDOT multimodal. We actually had a meeting with PennDOT this past week to talk about the curvature on state and Texaco, both roads, to help make those safer for the traffic volume that we already have and continue to have even more as we go along. And of course, our Paul Walters Park and an RCAP grant that we're going to go ahead and apply for in 25.
Hey, what's the safety improvements to the bike?
That's the feasibility study and the grant that we had put in.
And the lighting's part of that?
Yes, it is. Yeah. Paintings, lightings, piano key, key ADA ramps. It's enhancements and so forth.
Yeah, just to elaborate on that, Dave. It is the phase one, like the the bare minimum necessities that really bring some improvements along the Carlisle Pike. So lighting, piano keys, and maybe some ADA ramp adjustment.
But the lighting and everything, that's not a study. That's to do it.
Correct. That's to do it. Yeah.
The byproduct of the feasibility study that we had done. Phase one of what we should. Jump onto the next page. Is every anybody been up to Paul Walters Park? It's 90 day where it was nine minutes ago. Have some pictures here. Highly recommended. You go see it. God with that park. Doesn't look the same. We're really excited about where that project is. What we're going to be going on.
Scott, is there just it's just too loud, I think. Can we just get the master volume down? No? Up here? Okay. Okay. Okay, all right.
All right, so I'll talk loud here. So Paul Walters again. Highly recommend you to go see where that park. Pounds of dirt that had lots of high grass. And finally have tons of. Really good place to start the phase two of it. So very excited. I'm going to go to the next one. Bridge, as you know, tonight we have Hemp Ridge on the agenda. Some of the pictures I was over there today walking. Progress over in Hemp Ridge. Y'all, what the construction company is saying, where they think it'll be done, and then what options we have. This year, this closes out our year of events. So we had our. Pretty cold night, anybody that's. It was our first time over there. Reason we moved it is it created a traffic problem on the Silver. Cars got so backed up. She going on, we did not have to be available. Well, the quick things, I want to publicly thank every one of the Silver Springs staff. Nobody have worked. Other a budget for 25. Waiting on the words that I'm up here sharing. There. Kind of find ways and means. Everybody here, if anybody can come there. Really great. Great job by all the staff. Doesn't get any easier. I'm here. You already are seeing a number.
Thanks, Ray. All right, I did fail to mention an announcement. That is that the board held an exec session this evening, and that was to discuss personnel and real estate matters. Scott, that sounded a lot better so far. And with that, we'll move on then to public comment. If there's any public comment, please come up.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Board members, I'm Bob Long, 21 Keystone Drive in the Township. I know that the text amendment issue that was scheduled for a public hearing tonight was continued until months next month. I thought I'd leave the board with an issue to consider in the next month before that public hearing takes place. The Associate Justice of the Supreme Court Neil Gorsuch wrote a book and published it earlier this year, and the book is entitled "Overruled: The Human Toll of Too Much Law." And Associate Gorsuch, in his book and his prologue, writes the following quote. "What does it mean for our nation's promise of equal treatment when our laws become so numerous and so complex that only an affluent or connected few can navigate their way? And what happens to our respect for the law itself when the law no longer just reflects common sense norms, but includes unpredictable traps for the unwary?" Unquote. I add another question. What happens to a community when its zoning ordinance is amended so frequently on an ad hoc basis that the citizens are left wondering what is the next amendment coming down the road? My answer is that it will render the zoning ordinance or any ordinance this board passes to be unpredictable and unreliable by the citizenry. And it becomes only an effort by the moneyed interests to come in before the board and seek exception after exception after exception. Now, this board dutifully amended the ordinance, the zoning ordinance in 2022, along with the comprehensive plan. Last year, the the board amended that 2022 ordinance on a number of occasions. You had to do it with the floodplain regulations. You allowed solar farms in the general industrial zone. You changed the definition of plant center and allow drop lots in the heavy industrial zone. You amended it to allow for the filling station out there on Carlisle Pike for a a single big box retailer. And I just ask that you put into context what happens to our ordinances that need to be predictable and reliable for the citizenry if it is continually amended again on an ad hoc basis? What is interesting, Justice Gorsuch also leaves or in his prologue recounts an exchange between a fictional character, Arthur Dent, and a planning council official. And this comes from a book. Some might have read it. I think maybe our high schoolers today and in recent years might have read it. It's relatively recent, The Hitchhiker's Guide to the Galaxy. And that exchange goes like this. The plan council official says to Arthur Dent, but the plans were on display. Dent replies, on display? I eventually had to go down to the cellar to find them. That's the display department. With a flashlight? Uh, well, the lights had probably gone, so had the stairs. But look, you found the notice, didn't you? Yes, said Arthur. Yes, I did. It was on display in the bottom of a locked filing cabinet, stuck in a disused lavatory with a sign on the door saying, quote, beware of the leopard, unquote. Now, it's a comical reference to a fictional character trying to find the plans to why his house was being destroyed for the sake of a bypass. We have the luxury of having our ordinance out on the website. It's 291 pages, though. And I say that to sift through amendment after amendment on what is already a a full fledged zoning ordinance is problematic. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, any other public comment? Clarence?
So. Best. How was that?
Did good.
Okay, I'll do it. This is going to be an interesting juxtaposition from what you just heard. Although I think it might actually be complimentary, too. I'm I'm coming for you to ask about the Woodland Buffer Zone proposal I made last time. It did come up as a potential zoning ordinance change, but I think unlike what was mentioned earlier, this was actually staffed. I mean, it isn't coming in ad hoc, spent six months working on this with the staff, starting with the lowest committees, moving up to the planning commission, including the county planning department, and then finally to you. But my concern is that after all that and looking at that, nothing has come of it. And the reason I said it is because I actually asked a couple of the supervisors where we stood on that, and the answers I got basically was you didn't know what was coming down, or you're waiting for a direction from the staff. And then, of course, when I asked the staff, their answer I got was they were waiting for a direction from the supervisors. And so we're kind of in a classic catch 22 where that is. Also, if you remember that this was started off as an initiative from the residents, at least a way for future residents to come with any changes that they thought might be needed. And quite frankly, as time moves on, conditions change, and every time conditions change, you may need to change some of the rules and how we we regulate that. So although I think ad hoc changes might not be the greatest, well thought out changes in response to changes in the environment may well be be necessary. So where I stand here is asking where we are with the Woodlands proposal, and I found basically there's two problems that we're facing. One is procedural, which is what I just mentioned as far as you're waiting on the staff and the staff is kind of waiting on you. But the other is also policy and philosophical. Whereas again, getting back to the previous speaker's notes or his observations. I took this through the staff and Supervisor Lenker, the zoning hearing board chair, highly recommended that we actually do a zoning ordinance change. And I've recommended a a single line in the zoning ordinance. But others, like the staff, basically thought that we shouldn't be messing with the zoning ordinance, that we should actually put this in as a a condition or a set of conditions. And I proposed actually a toolbox for this and then other changes that we think might be useful. We can pull that out for particular circumstances and then make those work by negotiating with the developers. But those who thought zoning ordinance was necessary thought that that was unlikely to happen, which is why things get ramrodded through the zoning ordinance. I think both sides have merit. And I'm I actually built the proposal to accommodate both, meaning that yes, there is a one line asking for a zoning ordinance change, but the rest is all these conditions that are behind that we could use or not use depending on the circumstances. So what I'm looking for basically is just a decision. I can offer three, and before the solicitor jumps on me and says, I'm I'm trying to get you to vote on something, I realize that you may actually have to put this on another agenda. But you could accept the proposal as I I put it forth with one line in the zoning ordinance and the rest as a playbook that you build upon. You could send it back to the staff and ask for their inputs as to how maybe what to accept and how best to implement that. Or quite frankly, you could just say, hey, that was an interesting proposal. We learned a lot from it, and we really don't need to move on any further. But what I didn't want to have happen is for it to just sort of fizzle and and die unnoticed. And so I would like a decision. And basically what that comes down to is how would you like to handle the Woodlands proposal that I proposed last month? But also, is there a way that we can codify how the public and residents can actually bring initiatives forward? And that's what I would I would ask of you to answer those two questions.
Thank you, Clarence. Appreciate it. Dave, you want to comment?
Yeah, Clarence, I I wanted to talk to Scott yet on this and I meet the Christmas party tomorrow. I have a couple of questions I want to run through him pertaining to it. I think there's merit to some parts of what you you know, you say there. I just want to make sure like as people always talk about the unintended consequences of certain things with it, you know, like leaving when you have an established forest, it's at the end of its life cycle, and you have a changeover yet. I think you have to do something that that can make it sustainability wise. Were you planning for that if if it's at it? I have some ideas. I want to talk to Scott before I comment one way or another.
That's actually exactly what I was looking for is to stimulate ideas, thoughts, and and I'm I would not say that's a perfect proposal. It may not even be a particularly good proposal. But if it gets you thinking and maybe it gets some things changed, it was a very worthwhile proposal. And that's why I didn't want to just see it die. And I hadn't really heard anything back after a month, which is why I'm I'm here and asking about it.
Yeah, I I'd like to explore a little bit more as well personally, Clarence. I think, yeah, I didn't admittedly maybe fully understand everything that was there. I'd like have some more input from staff as well, but I think there were some good ideas there that that may be feasible.
Then then, like I said, the staff was waiting for direction from the supervisors and.
Well, we have two in support, I guess, if there's any other comments or if everyone's okay with with having the staff take a closer look at that, and then we can have some more discussion.
That's how it gets done.
I think that there's things in it that we possibly could probably implement. I don't know about in the entirety, but I think there's part of it. And like I said, like, I think there's a place for the issue we run into, and it's like when we get into either like the land preservation or any of the other things that we've implemented, as I call two thirds of the way through the game, there's all those missed opportunities. We have a lot of industrial that's already built up. Especially like, as you know, like when you get like where the conflict points are, like in the area where you live. These kind of tools, as you call in the toolbox, would have been beneficial back then. But a lot of people, you know, and I don't think it's through like malice or negligence, I I don't think they think long term as this builds out what could happen, or when you get to those conflict points, a lot of time the industrial building occurred outside them, and now you're getting to the point where they're the last few tracks left. And you get into those points where you have either residential in the area and or other types of uses where it would be, you know, like probably add to the pleasantries of living near that type of use, where if you could keep, you know, like some sort of either vegetative buffer or, you know, any other type of physical or natural landscape buffer that would help protect those people. And the problem is, a lot of those sites that we had before, you know, like, I don't think people thought about it because you weren't at those critical points in the zoning where you had the conflict point. So I I think there's things that could be done with it. I wanted to talk to staff. I hadn't had time to be in the township building here lately, but we have our party tomorrow. I was going to pick Scott's brain.
Scott might want to have a word with you, Clarence. I think you just booked his Christmas party.
Although I will would want to just say, and I mentioned this last time. Development's not over. Development may be over for virgin land, but we got a lot of redevelopment, rezoning. All this would still apply under some of those circumstances. So please don't give up on making the the ordinance better for just those very reasons.
Oh, no. And and the issue would be like, you have different phases of redevelopment. You could have the current building where they they refit it to what their needs are. I don't know if we're in the point where we'll have a high percentage of flat out full redevelopment where they raise the building and they start from scratch. But like you say, that that comes through time as ground gets more and more scarce, that's virgin. That's when you increase your probabilities of that. And I think like now's the time we have to be thinking what happens when we get to that point.
Exactly. Exactly what I'm anticipating.
Turn me off. Oh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought last time when you did the presentation, it was my understanding that you were going to submit your ideas to the staff, and the staff is going to look at the ideas and see where they could maybe implement.
The staff had the the full up proposal. That was part of the staffing process. They'd seen it in several different iterations. They're the ones that presented it to you. So the staff had it. I think what the staff was missing was an actual trigger saying, look at it.
Well, it's it's always a trigger that, you know, if you present something, then the staff gets it. They should definitely look at it, and then they can run it by us.
They did look at it. We did run it by you, but there was no.
Yeah, it was I think my fault. I think I moved on pretty quickly last meeting. I I think that was my fault, our fault. So I I I didn't mean to cut you off here. I just I see what you're saying. We just kind of moved on, and that was the end of it, right? So that's a fair point.
I I think we thought, at least I thought there were some good points there that you made during the presentation, so.
I'm not casting aspersions. I'm just trying to get it reengaged. That's all.
Oh, and Scott, tomorrow, make a point, because I know you'll be.
Scott's calling in sick tomorrow.
You you hunt me down, and I do have a couple of questions. I I think there's some merit to it.
Dave's buying lunch.
We just have to make sure that, like, I we cover the bases. I I think so many times we do things and there's unintended consequences. And I I think we hit the level of playing field boost for the residents and.
And I agree. And and this is actually also part of that process of bringing ideas in. We we hadn't mastered that last little piece where the ideas get actually reviewed and recommended on. And so this is still part of that learning process.
Thanks, Clarence.
That I'm hoping we would codify.
You mentioned about the toolbox, which is great, and and I agree with when you change ordinances, then you take the unintended consequences of changing those ordinances. But if you have a toolbox you can work from, if something comes up, then then it's possible you can use that.
Yeah, it it would mitigate that risk. That's all.
Thanks, Clarence.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clarence.
Dave, I'm I'm actually off tomorrow, but you can still give me a call.
I knew you'd find a way to get out of that.
Well, it's my birthday. It's my birthday, so I think I take off, right? Thank you. Thank you.
I'll buy lunch for you someday.
All yours.
Hello. Um, I just want to piggyback off of that just a little bit. I agree, I do think that some changes would be good. I when I was going through all of the ordinances, you know, for the warehouse, I noticed there were changes to the floodplain, changes to the setback requirements. So and I think changing warehousing to be conditional use period is a great idea, but maybe relook at some of those setbacks and put them back to what they were instead of allowing a parking lot to be so close to a residential area. Like you say, I mean, we're in an area where there's tons of traffic, flooding issues. I mean, that's why we have these retention ponds everywhere. I've never seen that anywhere I lived before here, but I mean, that's just my two cents.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will say with the you talk about the floodplain, a lot of the changes that were made to that was by the federal government that isn't solely something the towns. Yeah, so just as long as you understand there's different levels.
Just just for the record, that was Denise Baylor, your name, right? Okay, got it. Just want to make sure that we've got that. Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, anything online Scott? Mr. Lake, it's all yours.
I, excuse me, I first of all would like to ask that from the consent agenda items six C two be pulled out for separate discussion. I would like to hear some description of how that further conveys authorities to the township manager of finances handled by the township. I would like to offer that under new business items four through six should be and should have been discussed in the context of the budget and should now be taken up in further discussion of next year's budget and not through this manner. Item seven, which you've been speaking to with regard to what amounts to a full sale overhaul of land development zoning ordinances that were just passed two years ago. The only comment that I made back then was with respect to this imparting stability. Your first commenter alluded to the instability that the volatility of changing ordinances, whereas variances should have been sought through the zoning hearing board have been done. I would further suggest that the first review of this proposed change to that document be done through vetting by the zoning hearing board for that is in part their purpose and that a third part legal counsel should be considered to consult on this, who has the expertise to ensure the legalities of those ordinances. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lake. Will poll six C then at that request? Any other comment online? Say that again Scott, sorry. Ricky McLaren?
Yep, can you can you hear me?
Again?
Okay, hi, um, I have a few things. First, I just wanted to say that we could not hear basically any of Ray's presentation and Willa and Scott were both working to try to get it figured out, but my request in the future is if if there is technical trouble where the people who are listening online can't engage, if if the group can just take a pause and a break to try to resolve that, I think that's really the right thing to do. If we're going to be offering, you know, streaming options, then we need to make sure it's working correctly. And let me just say, I'm very thankful for this option because I'm not able to go in person and I would love to see like, you know, the planning commission be streamed as well so that more people can engage, but if there are technical issues, I'd really appreciate it if Ray would have just stopped his presentation so that we could figure it out, which was an easy fix. We just needed Ray on a different mic in the moment. Okay, the first speaker today, I'm sorry, I missed their name, but they they mentioned that the ordinances are really lengthy and very difficult to go through and I agree. And I just wanted to say again, I know people have said it previously, but there is or there was at least an online e-code that made the ordinances much, much easier to sift through. And we were looking at that when the Trindle Spring Trade Center proposal came forth and we were spending a lot of time, hours looking at that thing and digging through it only to realize that it wasn't updated. So it was publicly available, it was the more accessible document, so obviously we used it, we appreciated it and it wasn't up to date. So that should be something that really should be updated and made available moving forward. Two more things, I just wanted to say that I think like Clarence, every meeting when Clarence speaks in public comment, I am so astonished by how helpful he is and level headed he is and how much good he brings to our township. And I think that he really is putting forth things that, like proposals and discussion points and topics that are just going to help us all around. I appreciated his woodland buffer proposal. I think that's meant to really help the citizens of the township. And I, you know, I just hope that when he presents things, they're taken seriously. I hope that everyone's proposals are taken seriously, but it's it's a little disheartening to hear that, you know, he presented last month and didn't get any progress and I'm like, of all people, you know, Clarence has spent so much time helping this community. I would have hoped that he his, you know, proposals would have been pushed forward and I understand that wasn't intentional and there was some communication stuff, but but, you know, I just wanted to voice that. With that too, I think that there was a comment that was made with the ordinances about, you know, a lot of the times when they're created, it's working in the moment and you don't realize there's an issue until there's a critical point, yada, yada. That needs to change, like we need to be thinking ahead, we need to be thinking ahead. We can't wait till there's a critical point where hundreds and hundreds of families are in a situation where they might have to move out of their homes because there's an issue with a ordinance. So I just ask you all to, you know, take that really, really heavily in all that you do because we are trusting you to protect us and think forward and it's not just you, it's like everyone who's working in the government for us. Okay, and my last thing, you all can still hear me, right?
Yeah, we can Ricky.
Okay, so my last thing, I did want to ask for a couple of things to be removed from the consent agenda, let me just pull it up really quick. So new business, so item six and item six B, the consideration of a motion for basically the Woods Drive Improvement Project, I'd like that to be removed from the consent agenda and I would just love to hear a little bit more information and details about what this Woods Drive Improvement Project is because it's going to, I assume, impact a lot of us because Woods Drive is a pretty heavily trafficked road. John asked for the other one that I was going to ask to be removed, it was new business point C two about the township manager having exclusive approval privileges. I agreed with John that I felt like that's a a big, a big decision to be made, so I'd appreciate hearing you all deliberate it and discuss it. Also, I'm sorry if my daughter is talking a lot, let me know if you don't hear me at any point. And then the last one I'd like removed from the consent agenda is, let me see, expense approvals, uh, letter C, Keener Property Lease Renewal. I myself and several other people I've spoken to would like that to be removed from the consent agenda and discussed. 105 Texaco Road with Keener Properties is up against the road that was the emergency entrance and exit for Trindle Spring Trade Center before it was denied by the board. So that's obviously a hot area and we want to know what's going on with that and hear you all deliberate it.
All right, thank you Ricky, will do.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you all, you know, happy holidays and happy new year to everyone, appreciate it.
Thanks again. Scott, anybody else online? Just in person, Mr. Franklin?
Chairman, John, I'm also chairman of the township zoning hearing board.
Hold on, something happened to the mic so that people can hear you.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Got it.
No, we can't.
Okay, I apologize, I'll start again. I want to go back to an item that that Mr. Lake brought up regarding the zoning ordinance revision. As I read the language and Mr. Chairman, I'm looking for to be corrected here if I misspeak. So we're basically authorizing the drafting and advertising of a document that is announcing the revision of the township zoning ordinance, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, speaking on behalf of the Silver Spring Township Zoning Hearing Board, we would love the opportunity to provide a review of the ordinance once the proposed changes are drafted. I will also go on record for myself as saying two years is too soon. The United States Constitution has a very precise, deliberate and difficult process for revising it, something that the township doesn't seem to have. Some of the changes make sense, as Mr. Linker alluded to with the the floodplain changes, the federal government makes a change, we have to adapt, that's understandable. But some of the things that I've been hearing recently leave me scratching my head. So I want to go ahead and just just voice that. Also to members of the audience, zoning hearing board meets second Monday of the every month with the exception of October, we always run into a problem with Columbus Day and we would invite you to come attend those meetings as some of them can be extremely informative. So that's my statement to Mr. Mr. Chairman, so again, I just wanted to go on record, the zoning hearing board is not afraid to hear a variance request. I know that that's also been brought up on occasion, oh, we don't want to bother the zoning hearing board, baloney, that's what we're there for. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Franklin. Any other comment? Okay, who do we have?
Yes, I just have something that I know has been tabled for next month. It has to do with the gateway and the text amendment for the project, excuse me, for statewide partners LLC. I just want to ask the board if anybody has read or understands what the terminology that the Developers Council has referred to when they call residential universal design building code or where that comes from?
Victoria, I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't understand you, I didn't understand your question, could you say it again?
Okay, there's been talk referencing the project that needs this text amendment that was submitted and it has to do with a multi, a medical, if I, maybe I'm, correct me if I'm not saying it in its entirety, a medical multifamily residential unit to be in the gateway area?
Right. I mean, the information we have, it does define, it attempts to define that definition, I can say that and yeah, I mean, obviously no, no more discussion or decisions on it this evening, but we do at least have what's prepared.
I'm not, I'm not discussing, I just want to know if anybody on the board or in our township has looked at what Developers Council has referred to as the residential universal design building code?
Yeah, I see staff shaking their head, Victoria, I haven't personally to answer directly, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that exact, I haven't looked in detail at that term that you're that you're mentioning there, but I do see some staff heads shaking, so I believe they're familiar with it.
Okay, I just want to make sure that people do have a chance to look at that. I think it's quite important to our township to know about it and what the what the definitions could mean going forward on any project in this township, whether it be multifamily or whether it be single family residential and what their objectives are. It's not like the universal electrical code, which is what was created for townships and municipalities and boroughs to follow one electrical code. This is something completely different. This has nothing to do with accessibility or the ADA, which was totally for public buildings. So it that's, that's all, I'm not, I just want to make sure that everybody has a grasp of what that means, that code and where it's coming from.
Okay, thank you, Victoria.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else online Scott? All right, final call? Okay, we'll move on then to consent agenda.
Carl?
Yes.
I was gonna.
Apologize, go ahead.
That's okay. There have been some back and forth between Supervisor Cotsmore and myself related to a statement that I made in September. I don't want to rehash all that, I just wanted to read, what I was asking is to add to the minutes for this meeting and then add this language that I'm going to read and then two emails to attach them to the minutes for December. At the October 23rd Board of Supervisors meeting Supervisor Cotsmore requested again that Supervisor Brown provide him with any emails related to her statement from the September 25th Board of Supervisors meeting. During the September 25th Board of Supervisors meeting Supervisor Brown made a statement regarding the planning commission liaison position and the bullying of herself and a member of staff. Supervisor Cotsmore's response to her statement that evening included the following, quote, "If you have emails from me that says that I'm bullying you, I want you to produce them, you need to produce them, I want to see them because they're not there," end quote. Supervisor Brown has produced two emails that back up what she said in her statement from September 25th and they are attached to these minutes. I'm not going to read the emails, I have no desire to go back through that, but I would just add that this be added to the minutes along with attaching the emails that I've provided.
All right. Any other public comment?
I would like to add to the minutes that I reviewed the emails and I do not see bullying. I'd like that to be added to the minutes.
That's perfectly fine, you can spin them any way you want, I believe they back up what I said.
Why don't you read them then?
I don't want to drag the audience members through all that, I think that having them since they are subject to right to know, the exchanges between us are subject to right to know, if we just attach them to the minutes, then residents can look at themselves and make up their own minds what they say and what the meaning is behind them.
One that touts transparency, now's the time to speak it so people can see how ridiculous this is.
I really don't. I really don't think that you want to challenge me about transparency.
Okay, any other final call for public comment? All right, we'll move then on to the consent agenda. We'll entertain the motion for that excluding six B, six C and seven C. We'll revisit those in just a moment.
I have comments.
Mr. Linker?
Or questions. Actually, first, I don't know. I guess this is the police. There was an expense. It was like 10 eight emergency vehicle for a thousand dollars. Said something about wiring. Is that a newer vehicle or is it an older one? That you were having problems with?
It's from back in February. They sent us a bill. We paid that bill. And in June, they sent us another bill. We said, no, we already paid you that bill in February. It was for two set of work. They did it in February. They didn't do it well enough that it fixed the problem. So it went back in June. In June is when they then added the Kuzma. So that pays for the Kuzma. But the rewiring was included in the first bill. So.
But we didn't do any more work recently. It's all fixed. It's.
Yes, and and since then, since the June time, we've had zero issues at all. The the Kuzma, if that was the reason by itself or the all of it as a whole, we've had knock on wood.
I wasn't sure and I wanted to make sure it was fixed. So we're not, we're good.
It's good.
Okay. Tyler, I think it's 12 four. There's invoices to Stevenson. It says exhaust gasket and a belt, drive belt. Would?
I think that was for the Mack truck leaf component.
It's that one. It's not the other.
It's not the Tarko.
Okay, all right. Then there's a I assume this is for copier quadient leasing 1940 37. It says leasing. It didn't say what? What's?
Stuffer for the stormwater payments.
The the what's the stuff?
Of stormwater. We have leased equipment last year.
Folding machine.
Folding stuffer and everything.
Okay, all right. So that's not a copier because I thought we had already leased a copier before or something. So it's just a folding machine.
Yes, this is specifically for the stormwater purpose billing.
Okay, all right. They're the only questions I had then.
Thanks, Dave. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. I'll look for a motion again excluding six B, C and seven C. Do I have a motion?
Let me just clarify, Carl, we'll be adding the what I asked to add to the minutes of this meeting, correct? That's not actually under the consent though, right?
Right.
Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion on consent?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus the items that were requested to be removed by the public.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Harry, second. All in favor say aye. Opposed if any, that motion carries. We'll bring to the table six B, which is the CFA LSA statewide grant resolution. And that was for the Woods Drive improvement. Can we, can we have a rundown on those improvements, Tyler?
Yep, yep, I'll be handling that. So the board has discussed several months back in contract with HRG to do preliminary design work on Woods Drive to look at Woods Drive from 114 to Route 11. So the west side of Woods. And what we're looking at there is to see how we can widen that road out a little bit to make it more conducive for the increase in vehicle traffic along that road. So to help with that project, we put in an LSA grant through the CFA at the state level to try to get some funds to help offset the cost of those improvements. We have not landed on what those improvements will look like yet. HRG is still in that process of getting those options together for us. But we didn't want to miss the grant round with possible funding through a grant to help offset some of those costs.
And this is between Route 114 and the intersection for the new development back there.
Correct.
Public to know that it's not any other portion. It's the west side.
Correct.
The red light back to where the
The call is.
The new intersection quasi goes into a four way. We need to widen that and bring it up to standards.
And Tyler, you mentioned you, I apologize.
Well, that that's going to occur as well back between the bridge going to the towards Commerce Drive. That that's also going to occur this winter. It's a safety issue there.
And Tyler, you mentioned no specific designs that basically we were able to submit a narrative enough to fulfill the requirements.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
We'll have more opportunity to discuss the actual, what the resulting designs are from from HRG and staff, correct?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. And I'm not sure if Aaron has anything to add on that design side. They're just, HRG is working on it. They're working through different kind of concepts to bring to the board and lay it out there and say, you know, what direction do we want to go with it here? We're just not at that point yet.
Yeah, there's going to be multiple concepts. So it's not just like, you know, here you go. You got to do this. It's whatever the board would like in the end.
Right? Any other comments or questions? When we look for a motion then on six B while we're here?
I'll make a motion to approve six B.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Nancy, second. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed if any, that motion carries. Six C is delegation of signatures. Maybe Solicitor Schultz could help us out with that one.
Sure, I can, I can help with that. That's a resolution that's required by by PennDOT in order to give someone signatory authority. It's purely ministerial. So so where this occurs in the process is the board has identified a project that that you're going to implement. The board has identified a grant that you want to apply for. The board has approved that grant application. And then the township has been awarded that grant application. This is all the documentation that's necessary to get funding from from the federal aid highway grant program. So it's just signing off on documents in order to get that that grant funding into the township. And that's simply what it is.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Comments or questions on that? All right, I'll, I'll dare I reopen the door. We'll, we'll take a few comments on that. Who do we have, Scott? Mr. Lake?
Who currently has that authority?
No one does.
No one does.
No one does. The the last resolution expired and PennDOT is requiring a new resolution.
So that's certainly not the way it reads in the agenda. It's very misleading. So until this point, that authority has resided with the township manager?
It was under prior resolutions. It was with the township manager, yes.
Okay, I just wish that would have been clearer in the way the agenda was drafted. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, John. All right, I'll look for a motion on seven, excuse me, that was six, six C. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Nancy, move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Laura, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed if any, motion carries. Seven C is Keener Property Lease Renewal. Tyler?
Yep, I'm going to take that one as well. So for for years now, the township has rented some storage space at the Keener Storage Facility there to store public works equipment. We've had it for years and years now and we need that space to continue to store public works equipment. So that's the the rental lease agreement that we have with them. And they are, we just got to renew it.
Yeah. It's, it sounds like Larry said your rent's going up.
Yeah.
I have tried an alternative location on a potential future site that we may take over. At this time, I haven't heard anything yet. So I tried.
And their price isn't that bad for commercial storage. That price is not that bad. I mean, I'm, I'm getting 12, 1300 for a one bedroom apartment. I mean, that's, that's very reasonable.
Yeah, the reality is, is Dave, I don't think anybody here in the staff disagrees. Unfortunately, we don't have an option.
Exactly.
That's, that's the, that's really what puts us in a jam here. We have no option. We don't have a place to protect these assets that, you know, the the board, you know, allows us to purchase. And this is one of the challenges we have. It's exposed all year to the elements and we should be protecting them.
Okay, thanks, Ray and Tyler. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll look for a motion then on seven C.
We'll make a motion that we approve.
Dave, move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Nancy, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed if any, that motion carries.
Always a day late, Harry. I know.
We move on to public hearings. First one this evening is 1122 Trundle Road. This is an agricultural security area application. And I'll kick off the meeting by turning it over to Solicitor Schultz.
And this is to add 1122 Trundle Road to the agricultural security area. A public hearing is required on this. Public posting of the property was was required and and achieved on on this. I'm going to touch on a couple of things that we need to address in in these public hearings. Then I know Supervisor Brown may wish to say a few things because she helped steer this process. And then we'll, we'll open it up to public comment. So of the the items that that need to be shown or examined at the public hearing. And you have an agriculture, agricultural security area advisory committee has done this this work for you and analyzing the property. One, they've, they've determined the property is at least 10 acres. That's, that's a simple one. Second, they've determined that the soils do meet criteria and evaluation, evaluation criteria that they are supportive of agricultural uses and conducive to agriculture. Hundred percent of the land on the parcel contains class one through class four soils, which are conducive to agriculture. Next, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the township. Parcel is located in the agricultural area of Silver Spring Township's future land use map and is consistent with comp plan. It is also consistent with the the zoning ordinance. It is viable for agricultural use. And then the the committee also noted that it is consistent with the county comprehensive plan. Those are the items we need to touch on. They were all sufficiently shown to the committee. And then I'll, I'll pass it on to to Supervisor Brown before we we go to public comment.
Okay, do you need me to go through any of the steps that we took or notifications or just talk about the property?
We, we don't need anything more on the record than what I provided. So you can elaborate however you wish.
Just let people know that this is a property that the township is working on preserving with the county, county farmland program. And in order to be eligible for the county farmland program, you must be enrolled in the ag security area of the township. So that is what the purpose of this hearing is, is to get them enrolled in that. I have notified the residents. They are excited to be part of this program and part of, to be preserved. So we're looking at selection from the county, probably sometime in spring of 2025. And then we'll be preserving them hopefully the next year. Sorry about me. My throat there. That's all I have.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Anybody raising a hand, Scott? Yep, or will I, oh, I didn't see disappeared. I can't see all the way across there. Okay. All right, thank you. Does the board have any questions about this item? Okay, then I'll.
This is the former Fertinbo Farm, right?
Oh, I don't, I don't know.
Adams's farm area.
Yeah, but this is where Wayne's grandparents.
Yeah, they're along the turnpike.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry. I don't know the history, but yeah.
Okay, that's all. Then I'll turn it back to Chairman Mockamore for consideration of a motion.
All right, with that, the hearing is closed and I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve adding a one, one 1122 Trundle Road to the agricultural security area of Silver Spring Township.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Look, Nancy, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed if any, that motion carries. We did have a request to continue again the next public hearing. This is ordinance number eight of 2024 and I'll momentarily turn it over to Solicitor Schultz for some guidance on continuing.
Yeah, there's been a request by the by the applicant to to continue this hearing. There's some, some additional cleanup work that they they want to do to be able to provide to the board and that would be next month. So we simply need a motion for continuance and a vote on that.
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Lanker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Harry and maybe just to clarify the date.
And it's a motion to table on continue.
On continue, yeah, for for continuing.
And that would be our January regular stated meeting.
Correct.
It's correct. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed if any, that motion carries. We'll move now to unfinished business. We have ordinance 2024 07, the fire code. And perhaps Mr. Brown would take the mic?
Yes. Yeah, we've been working on this for quite a while. It's been going, you know, we've had ongoing issue, numerous commercial properties throughout the township. We've had some emergency incidents at and have ran into some pretty significant life safety issues for both our emergency responders as well as patrons that are, you know, frequenting these businesses on a daily basis. I'm sure Glenn can also add much more information, but you know, we had one that was a few, about two years ago, we actually had a business. We had to shut down due to an incident. Some of the findings inside, I mean, we literally, to put it in simple terms, could have killed firemen. It's unfortunate, but that's, that's the situation we were in. We had an incident at that same facility here a couple of weeks ago and it's, it's back to exactly how it was before. So currently we have really nothing we can do to enforce anything when it comes to these findings. And we, you know, with working with our emergency service providers, it's, it's just getting to the point where we have to be able to take a stance and do something before unfortunately somebody gets hurt or killed. I mean, it's, it's horrible. Some of the things we're finding when we're getting out there. You know, I get phone calls quite frequently in the office of, you know, commercial properties that their exit ways are blocked and and things like that. You know, we're, we're just, we're finding so many issues that it's, it's unfortunate, but we're going to have to do something.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Look for input from the board, comments, questions? All right, hearing none. Anything else from staff? I'll look for a motion then.
Motion to approve ordinance 2024 dash 07 fire code.
Laura, move. Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed if any, that motion carries. Thank you, Bill.
Yep, thank you.
We have a yard waste discussion. Tyler?
Yeah, so I'll just tee it up. So I we've discussed this multiple times here this year with the yard waste program with the county being dissolved and shut down. So over the last couple of months, like we've talked about, Hampton has been trying to formulate a new program. And we finally got all their, we got a letter from them explaining what they want to do in the MOU for your guys' review. So I just wanted to tee it up because I know Supervisor Lanker has been very intimate with this. So I want to turn it over to him here to speak about it. But what we provided you guys tonight is is what we've gotten from Hampton for your guys' review. What Hampton is looking for is at minimum for us to say, yes, we're interested or no, we're not interested in it. They don't necessarily need us to sign anything tonight or approve a signature on an MOU. But they're looking for where are we at with the interest to join Hampton in a program to take over the county's program that no longer exists. So I just wanted to tee it up. I'm going to turn it over to Dave because he has been intimate with that. And he probably has more insight than what has been conveyed to me through the process. So to give Dave the mic, I'll let him have at it.
Yeah, we had a solid waste authority meeting Monday. I think a lot of the other municipalities have the same concern I have. I was one of them that pushed for an authority to be created when we originally had meetings here at the township building with all the participants involved. And it I have concerns with the MOU. I don't think you sign an MOU with it not totally being delineated what responsibilities, what what's required out of each municipality. I think there's things that need to be revised, needed and were added to it. I think we're in agreeance that the authority is the way to go. I know that there's other townships or municipalities, I shouldn't say, because we have boroughs that are involved that have an interest, but there, there's concern with the language. I think there needs to be either meetings with the participant. I think there needs to be either meetings with the participants to make sure everybody's concerns are aired. And I don't think that right now, I think we express support, however, as the MOU stands, I don't think we can, that's, that's my opinion.
Did you want to see Keith's online?
Yeah, it's his choice, we actually obviously had Hampton, asked him if they wanted to join in, so if Keith wants to make a comment, he can, if he doesn't, he doesn't. I think everybody knows the municipalities unfortunately were, have to make a decision overnight about finding an authority.
Yeah, I think, I think we're there in concept, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but I think, you know, Dave, you have a good point, we probably need to hash out the specifics. I know there was some TBDs, I think, in the MOU, so fair points, right?
Yeah, I think like once the equipment's transferred from the county and I know the county's position has been, they want to make sure everything is where it needs to be, I don't think you'll see a transfer of the equipment. So I don't, I think you lose leverage once it goes to a set municipality and there's nothing established. And I use the analogy, you don't go buy a car, sign an agreement, have no price on it or the options of what car you're getting. I mean, I think we have to get all of this straightened out before we agree. I'm all in favor in the concept, but I think that there needs to be more on.
Any other board member comments, questions?
Okay, so just to summarize, you guys are directing staff to craft a letter to send to Hampton to say, we are interested in pursuing this. And elaborate on wanting to have additional meetings to hash out the MOU.
Yeah, I think there needs to be, in theory, we're in favor of the authority, we have always been in support of the authority. We just think that there needs to be more done pertaining to the agreement and or having meetings.
Understood.
Make sure that everybody's input is crafted into that.
Okay.
Be fair, I think it was thrown together quick, so.
Board should also know that the county did redistribute out the funds that had been accumulated by each of the respective municipality this. So we did get our check this week.
That was another thing I had a concern because all that money over the years was people utilizing that machine that pretty much degraded that machine from the point it was new, that should go transfer with the machines. Because that was like the capital, a lot of that was capital fund money for replacement.
They, everybody got their disbursement and I think it was one of those, it was one step for them to continue to.
Breakaway, yeah.
How much money was there in total, not for us, but just.
Two hundred thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, we received about fifty-five, fifty-five thousand in ours. But that's a lot of years and Dave's been involved with the program since its inception, it was ninety-nine, ninety-seven.
Ninety-three.
That's even longer than I realized, so.
I was a young one then, youngest person there.
Still young.
I don't want to move on before we give Keith, if you did want to add anything, thank you for joining, just give you a moment if you wanted to provide any input. But I think if not, we'll be, we'll be sending a letter.
He was on a phone.
Oh, he's on the phone?
Yeah.
Okay. Wait. Okay.
Good evening, board members, appreciate your consideration on this matter regarding leverage. I can assure you a hundred percent that Hampton Township's not trying to leverage anything, but rather move forward with a transition that is recognized, that is needed. I believe in the MOU and certainly we can meet, as we've had many meetings on this particular topic. And this is the first time that I'm aware of anyone actually presenting a document specifying some concepts behind it. But it talks about the rates for the equipment, it talks about the responsibility of Hampton Township and the responsibilities of each participant. But if there's other matters there that the board feels is needed, by all means, we can see what the interest is of the other participants with the requested deadline of December twentieth.
Keith, I'll add, you and I went to high school, we graduated together along with Nate Silcox. By no means am I saying that I don't trust you guys, I wholeheartedly trust you. I just think perception wise with the whole group, it would be better if we hashed this out and make sure everybody has their input that elects to be in it. I know the county wants to ensure that everybody has their do say. They would like to see this program continue, albeit through an authority and not, you know, county sponsored through the manpower. And I give you guys a lot of credit for being willing to be the ones to administer the program. I just think we have some concerns and I know we had spoke that and I know you and Nate were not unavailable at that meeting down in Hampton Township at your municipal offices when we had that meeting. That there was a couple of people, myself being one, that had some things that we felt needed to be brought up. And by, yeah, by no means am I insinuating anything other, I think you've always been honorable with me as a person. I have full faith in you, but I think we need to have this stuff straightened out before MOUs are signed, so everybody's on the same page.
Understand and respect that, to be fair and candid, at this point, the township with the offer of the review of the MOU and the opportunity for each twelve participating members currently to discuss with their governing body, we were seeking a response by December twentieth, so I appreciate Silver Spring Township meeting that timeline. We await other municipalities to respond also at this point in time. Some have already indicated North Middleton has decided to withdraw from the program and pursue renting equipment or contracting out the service. So to that extent, I understand and happy to meet and appreciate your consideration.
Keith, North Middleton and Middlesex have a joint site as well, so I'm sure Middlesex will be out. And I understand potentially, and this is all verbal, the word on the street was that South Middleton was gonna continue the use of contracting services and some others. I think that was the other thing I would like to see in the agreement when we discuss in a meeting is a mechanism for municipalities that will be future mandated to have the ability to join. And those who have elected historically to be in and out of the program, a mechanism to protect those that ensure the program continues by being the ones that maintain it on a yearly basis. So there's some of the ideas, I want to be fair to everybody involved in it, and I know you do too as well, you've always been straight up.
Yeah, and what I'll do is following the deadline of December twentieth, advise each municipal manager which entities have responded to the affirmative or opt out. And just to keep everyone on the same page and see if a meeting is worth having.
If you don't mind Keith, I'll get ahold of you either through Jeremy or another means here. I want to talk to you on the phone before we have a meeting too about things one-on-one, so.
Sure.
Just to add before we move on too, so with our joint site with Mechanicsburg, in our conversations with Mechanicsburg Borough, they were looking for us to take the lead on this, for the program, just because we're the ones who operate the equipment on our site and whatnot. So we'll also communicate to Mechanicsburg that we're gonna be sending a letter of interest to.
And you and I will have a conversation about that because Carl just asked me something, I think outside the public forum. You and Ray and I will have a discussion maybe tomorrow if you're at the party about.
For sure, yeah, I just wanted, since we are in a joint facility with them. You know, if we intend to show interest in this program, Mechanicsburg kind of tags along with us.
Tyler, you just lost your party privileges as well.
Out of respect to Mechanicsburg, because that's a decision, I want to make sure when we get something in writing, you, myself and Ray discuss what we're gonna talk to them about pertaining to that, so they understand where we're at, so.
All right, thanks again Keith, appreciate you coming on, anything else, last call from the board? All right, Tyler, you good? Okay, thanks Tyler. All right, subdivision and land development, we have a time.
Should we make a motion on that?
Sure, yeah, why don't we, we can solidify it with a motion.
I'll make a motion that we delay the signing of the MOU with Hampton Township in the creation of a yard waste equipment authority until further issues and concerns are discussed and resolved.
All right, there's a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Harry second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed if any, that motion carries.
And I will add that make sure we put that we're in favor of the authority.
Understood.
Of the concept, so.
All right, thanks Dave. We have a time extension request for seven zero six three Wurtzville Road. And I believe we have representative this evening, if you'd like to come up.
Good evening, chairman and supervisors here today. My name is Alfred Amud, I reside at seventy sixteen Wurtzville Road, requesting extension for seventy sixteen Wurtzville Road for our cemetery land development. The reason being because of lead times from our engineer we were using. He, you know, with workload and stuff, he wasn't able to meet our satisfaction with submitting the land development last month. So that's why we're asking for the extension and we weren't satisfied with what he had to submit it.
Okay, thank you, comments from the board?
Just a question, are you planning once you get all this arranged through the engineering of starting construction? Are you gonna just let it set a little bit?
No, hopefully, our national leadership there have a budget allocated for it and they're really wanting to move the project forward, so hopefully within the few months we can submit this land development.
Do you think this will be enough to get you over that hurdle?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I would recommend that you consider asking for a year, you can do that. And if you do six months and it doesn't work out, then it's gonna cost you money.
Okay.
So I recommend that you ask for a year as opposed.
Thank you, that's fine, yeah, you can consider that, I really appreciate it.
And keep an eye on your contractors from here on out.
Definitely.
Make sure that they're doing the job that they're.
Yes.
Harry will do that for free if you.
I'll do it for free, no problem.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll look for a motion then.
I'll make a motion that we approve a one-year extension to the submission deadline, moving it to December, what are we at, like? No, that's January third, twenty twenty-six, right?
All right.
Yeah.
I would second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed if any, that motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a waiver request, this is eighty-two Linda Drive. Looks like we have a representative, come on up. Good evening.
Hi there. I just say my name and address.
Yeah, that works, yeah.
Michelle Orsinger, eighty-two Linda Drive Lot fifty-three. I'm just seeking a waiver for apparently for zoning.
You just speak into the mic.
You know, here.
Yeah. You could probably pull it up a little bit too, it might help, yeah, there you go, perfect.
That's all, it's not working. Yeah, hit the button.
We have a new system planned for twenty twenty-five, just so you're aware.
That's gonna be a standing ovation right there, right?
That did make the budget.
All right, so I did include pictures of, just to show the distance between the properties. And our enclosed porch is on top of our cement slab that, I don't know, that's our porch. And we have verbal permission to build that. And I just included pictures of all the people around me, the properties, to show that they, all the properties do have the same amount of space. And ours was the only one without the privacy of some type of porch. Great. So we just wanted to be able to keep our enclosed porch.
Carl, could I make a clarification real quick? Just for the public, just because we've been talking about the zoning ordinance and everything. The township has a mobile home ordinance that is separate than the zoning ordinance. That's why this is not at the zoning hearing board for a setback variance, I just want to make that very clear. There's a separate ordinance for mobile home parks and communities.
I'm sure a lot of these probably predate the zoning because that park has been in for a long time.
Oh, our neighbors was built about a week before ours.
Yeah, I just, I knew that that park from back in early nineties, it was established.
And since ours was, we started building in the spring, we didn't know we needed a zoning permit, which is why it wasn't completed yet with the siding and the roof and the outer wall. Ours, the picture of mine I did put on first, that outer tin is part of our roofing. We just put that up there as a shield because we didn't, we wanted to stop until we got the application and everything. And I spoke to Mike with codes enforcement and he said it is built properly because it is detached.
Good.
But yeah, they've, there's been a lot of new, new things getting built in there that I've been noticing after I found out that I needed a zoning permit. And so I was like, no, I'm coming here and they, the zoning department and Roble Codes Department already knows about everything that's been built on other properties in the same park over the past year.
Okay.
New sheds put in that no one knows about that are right up against properties.
Right.
Okay, Harry, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Do you have a park manager?
Christine was the park manager, she gets fired and then gets rehired and then gets fired, she's very known to the township.
When, when someone rents a trailer in that or maybe buys a space or whatever, there's rules and regulations.
Yes.
And I noticed that you said that the, it's for privacy, health concern, and you get harassment from your neighbors?
Oh, we've had to call the police on our neighbors.
In that regulation that everyone is supposed to follow.
Yes.
I know in some parks, if you don't follow the regulations, they ask you to leave. I don't know if you're familiar with Mickey Schuler, he owns a park in like Camp Hill area. He has a regulation, if you violate the regulations, you're asked to leave.
Right.
Now, would that apply to the people that's harassing you and?
That's what the park actually, the park owners are now working on. Because they have driven into their house drunk, they have thrown someone through their window with glass shattering the whole way over onto our cement pad while I have my dog out. And they were arrested for DUIs all within the past year.
Now, living there, you're supposed to sign a contract that says you're supposed to adhere to certain rules and regulations.
Yes.
And if you don't, then you're asked to leave and they can force you out.
Right.
Is that true?
I believe so, I mean, we own the mobile homes, we just don't own the land.
Right, right.
But yeah, I believe so.
They own the land, okay.
But that's a whole process, I guess, going through the courts, we've been there for five years.
Somebody owns the structure and somebody owns the ground, it's different than a regular apartment, it takes a lot longer to get somebody evicted. Right, yeah.
They're getting on them about how they've been acting a lot. And it's, it's just, it's getting, it's getting old. I wanted a space to sit outside, right, I didn't have to look at their broken window and my dog out without running through glass.
See, Harry's talking from experience, he's been thrown out of a few places. Trailer for sale or rent?
We'll be selling ours soon.
No, I know of cases like that where someone's been rowdy or whatever and Mr. Schuler asked them to leave because they signed a contract that, you know, they're supposed to follow the rules and they didn't follow the rules and they were asked to leave. And if they don't leave, then they get the sheriff after them, so that's why I was wondering.
That's what we're pushing for. Because it's, the cops have better. Because it's, the cops have better things to do than come drive up through there when they won't even come out of the house half the time. So then the, the cops leave.
Okay, that was, that was the question I had, you know, if there's any rules or regulations that
Oh, there are.
They're supposed to follow and stuff. And did they sign any contract that says?
We all sign the same, the same lease.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Harry. All right, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed uh waiver as presented.
Nancy move. Laura second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Do I wait to finish putting the siding and the other wall up until after I get that? The permit, go and go and pick it up? Yes.
Yeah, you should wait, wait till Chelsea reaches out or uh Mike.
Okay, yeah, I email her quite frequently.
Yeah, well, once, once we get the letter out from the decision, there'll, there'll be a criteria for it. Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have Cumberland Perry Area Career and Technical Center. This is a revision to a previously approved plan. Looks like we have representatives preparing. Welcome, come on up when you're ready.
Good evening. Um, I am Becky Hess. I'm with K and W Engineers, the civil engineer for the project. With me tonight, I have the architect Anthony Colestock with um Crabtree Roll Bar Associates. And I also have um Tom Wolf um who's with Cumberland Perry Career and Technical Center. Um, just wanna give you a brief overview of the project as it was, which you may be familiar with from our presentation in February. Um, at which time the project was conditionally approved. Um, as you can see, the previous project was proposing four building additions with two larger ones on the uh southwest side. As well as a new access drive along Old Willow Mill Road, which is planned south. And another access drive along Technology Drive, which is on the north side of the site. Um, the, the new project here. One larger building addition. One larger building addition in lieu of the two uh building additions which we had previously. And we are keeping the one entrance building addition on the um northeast side of the site. We're also going to be keeping the um new proposed access drive along Old Willow Mill Road. And we also have um the access drive addition on um Technology Drive, which is an alternate bid for the project. So the reason for the change in the plan is that um we bid the project in April. And it exceeded the budget that the um school had available. So we've made some changes that uh will better fit their budget.
Okay, great. Thanks. We'll look for comments or questions, Dave.
I do have a question. Um probably, you probably don't even wanna hear this, but pertaining to the leak, like it, has that been all remediated? Uh, any contaminated soil? I mean, that, that's been wrapped up. So that won't play in any part of this.
No, that, that will not be impacted by this. We are, we are still having the wells that will be tested uh periodically as, as required by the remediation plan. Last uh samples were taken during the month of November and we have not got the results back. But the last several samples have, have all shown no
contamination.
Contamination was not increased.
Okay, yeah, I just wondered with doing earthwork there and I knew you have professional staff there. I just wondered myself if the uh there was remediation or there's nothing that affects this project that from the leakage.
None of this project has been built over top of the area. I thought it would be the best way to.
Okay, I just, that was from my direction.
Would all the prior waivers that were approved still stand?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Any, any other sort of question I had?
I have a question. I, I asked before and I forget. What are the new additions or the new expansions for? Again, what departments?
Could you uh?
Just, just the purpose, not the amount of space.
Okay. Uh, we're expanding our welding program. We're expanding our auto collision technology program. We're expanding the advanced manufacturing program. We're relocating the uh electro, uh electromechanical engineering program. And adding an additional instructor and students in some type of a protective services type program.
What does that mean?
We're looking at a couple of different things there. We currently have a criminal justice program that focuses specifically on law enforcement.
So it's one, two, three, four, five, five expansions.
Uh, plus I, we're also expanding the logistics program. Thank you, Anthony.
Oh, okay. Good to know. Thank you.
All right, anything?
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions?
When, when you say logistics, um, what are we talking about?
Uh, materials handling, warehousing, inventory, forklift operation.
Supply chain.
Supply chain issues, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I like your tie, by the way, sir. Anything else from the applicant? Anything else from staff? All right, and seeing nothing else from the board, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we uh approve and revision slash modification land development plan for portion thirty-eight dash zero six dash zero zero one one dash zero two one EX at one ten Old Mill Road, Danexburg, PA.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Harry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any, that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next, we have Eagleview Middle School Expansion. This is a waiver request. And I don't know if we have a representative, Aaron, you want to? Aaron, just, you wanted to explain the waiver real quick.
Yeah, if you would, if you give me like a minute, I was pulling something up on this exact issue.
Okay. While Aaron's looking at this, this is just one more waiver. Um, they've said, I know they've come back a couple of times. There's been some um architectural changes um that require some additional waivers for the expansion. Um, so this is another one. They said once this is there, they think they're there though, that they can actually get to stuff with that. I think Aaron's ready.
Yeah, I'm ready. Thanks, Scott. Thanks for buying me some time. So um yeah, the uh waiver is normally we would require structures for any pipe connections um uh for storm sewer purposes. In this case, the one pipe that is um and that the waiver would apply to is underneath a sidewalk. And these are roof leaders tying into the storm sewer. So like every three or four feet or every ten feet, whatever the, the recurrence is. They would have these structures in the middle of the sidewalk and it would be hard for them to get ADA compliance. So normally I would say, no, we don't approve these. Figure out a, a way to tie into your storm sewer with structures. With this one, it seems okay to me, but uh ultimately it's the board's prerogative.
Do they uh, will they just put like an inserted T fitting?
Something like that, yeah, exactly.
Pipe in?
Yeah.
Is there a clean out or a blow off at the roof line or at the downspout point that there's?
There, I would say, from what I recall, yes, but they're not like uh at the sidewalk portion, they're farther upstream.
Yeah, but they, that they have access.
Yes, exactly right.
They can, they can access it if they have to flush it.
Correct, yeah, they could get, they could get something in there.
They put those slotted uh, the, the slotted end caps on them.
Yeah, then that way if it does clog, it gets a blow off.
Exactly, right.
So if they, they lose inserted Ts, I've used them on projects.
Mm-hmm.
They seal up. You're not gonna have any problems with that connection point. I'm all right with that.
Deal.
Any other questions? Okay, uh Nancy, anything?
What about, was, was there anything about sidewalks you for this particular project?
Yeah, uh, like waivers for sidewalks?
Thought it wasn't approved or there was up to the board or?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. So these sidewalks are right next to the school. They're not frontage sidewalks like we would normally discuss. I do remember for this project, I believe there were some, there was some relief granted on sidewalks cuz they may be doing them at a different point or through trails or some, some type of uh alternative like that.
Yeah, Nancy, cuz they uh, they're combining the lots. So technically, they, the subdivision plan would connect all the Rich Valley parcels that they have. So technically, when you combined a lot with some type of development, they have to put in sidewalk. But since we don't know yet what their access is gonna be off Rich Valley or if there will be one off there, we, we uh said to come back on that.
Fair enough. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks Nancy. I'll look for a motion then on item number four.
I'll make a motion that we approve waiver request for sixty-seven forty-six Carlisle Pike. The purpose of planned expansion of existing school building, associated site work, including drives and parking in the waiver being pipe modification Ts.
Okay, we have a motion from Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Harry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any, that motion carries. Thanks, Aaron and Scott. Under new business, these first three are related. If there's a desire, we could take them all together if the board would like. If there's any comments or questions? Okay. Yeah.
Standard adoption of the, of the budget, yes.
All right, I'd, I'd suggest a motion for one through three if anybody's willing.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty, twenty-four dash twenty, twenty, twenty-four dash twenty-one and twenty, twenty-four dash twenty-two.
Nancy move. Dave, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any, that motion carries. We have a few transfers here. Did maybe Finance or Ray wanna, wanna brief real quick on these?
Yeah, go ahead, Suba.
Just before Suba starts to explain the transaction, um, as you know, it has been, um, historically, we would go through the year, November year-to-date. And if in any case, there may be some additional uh money, we would always come to the board and seek what you would like to do with that money as we transfer it. So I'll tee it up here for Suba.
Yeah. Uh, on item number four, it is uh whatever we have surplus funds uh in general fund. We are asking the board to approve to transfer to future capital fund uh improvement fund, improvement uh projects. And uh to support the recreation fund for the Paul Walters grading uh thing. Um, I have submitted uh how we came up with these numbers. If you want me to explain in detail, I can go over it.
Anybody like more detail? No?
No.
I think we're comfortable, Suba.
Okay, uh, so do you want me to go to the next one?
Sure.
Yeah, uh, this is reinvestment. We already have uh funds in Pliggett. Uh, we are reinvesting uh two million from the general fund and the project construction fund, one million. Uh, it's already been reinvested and uh it for a one-year term.
Okay.
Um, next item is uh since we have some uh major uh real estate transfer and uh very good EIT and uh some building permits coming in for this year. We have some surplus fund in the uh general fund. Uh, we would uh like the board to uh up to another two million transfer to Pliggett. New, it is, it will be a new investment.
Right.
And uh we have some funds in a storm water. Uh, it's a separate fund. And uh we have projects aligned for twenty twenty-five for about three million. And the balance fund, we are uh requesting the board to approve to invest in uh Pliggett so we would earn more interest.
Okay, great. Thanks, Suba. Any comments or questions for Suba? Okay, Ray, you good?
Yeah, we're good. Thank you.
Yeah, we can do these all as one if the board's comfortable, four, five and six. Do, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve uh number four, five and six as listed.
Nancy move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Laura, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any, that motion carries. Thanks again, Suba. And now we have a zoning ordinance provision. This was some changes that we're looking to advertise. Um, Solicitor Schultz, like you're ready to speak?
Sure, yeah, I was making eye, eye contact with Scott to figure out who's gonna go first, cuz I think we'll both kinda chime in.
Okay.
Here and, and Ray may want to jump in at some point too. Um, so this has been, um, you know, the better part of this year, uh staff, uh primarily Scott and uh, and Chelsea uh have, have been going through the zoning ordinance. And I'm gonna paint with broad brushstrokes. And I've been involved in that process um just about from the beginning. Um, we've had a number of meetings to go over, over revisions. Um, so the, the broad brushstrokes are, um, one, this is being done because of the twenty twenty-two revisions and a desire to get that all codified so that E-code is up to date. Um, I just, I just checked in with Ray and the cost for that, um, for the E-code service to get, to get this ordinance placed into it is about twenty-five thousand dollars. So when we want, when we do that, we wanted to capture as much as, as we could in one shot. Although we, we also do want to have a cutoff. Like there's a time you're going to keep having, having issues that you, you discover. And I'll, I'll go into a little more detail on that. Um, but at some point, you have to decide, we're just going to make it happen, right? So, so uh, so staff and I were, were tasked with trying to bring this to you um over these, these last couple of months. Get it finalized and, and get it in front of you so you can start to consider it. Um, the other broad brushstrokes are, uh, this is uh needed to address some, some misses um by, by the consultant uh back in twenty twenty-two. There were just sort of odd things where there were definitions uh for uses, but no uses in any of the tables. And vice versa, there were uses in the tables where there wasn't a, a good clear definition. Um, we had to add a, a definition as simple as dry cleaner. Um, so it was completely absent, just as an example. Um, additionally, you know, Chelsea is the zoning officer, has a lot of day-to-day experience with the ordinance. Um, and has some challenges in interpretations of the ordinance because of definitions that aren't always clear. And we're also trying to make it a little more user-friendly so that it's, those def, when those definitions are clear, it's easier for someone to read and understand. Um, so we even worked on pictures um in this, in this process uh because pictures are of, often helpful. So you'll see changes to how the, the, the yards are, are described in, in the uh front yard, backyard, side yard. Um, in the depictions of, of the definitions. It, so we wanted to make sure it was, it was able to be implemented. We also wanted to address language um in, in the ordinance that um, that just is, is generally is challenging or missing, or there have been experiences with definitions of, of signs, for instance. And how those, how those are applied. So you're gonna see a lot of red lines in that ordinance. It's not intended to be a final ordinance for passage at this point. Um, so I'm going to give you some, some breathing space here that we're, we're not necessarily looking for a move to, to advertise this. It's not in, in the form to be advertised yet. I could turn it into that relatively quickly. Um, if you wanted to, to move forward and have this adopted as soon as, as March. But there are also a couple of things. I know there's one thing that we want to add. Um, Chelsea's had some issues with townhomes and duplexes that are non-conformities in some zoning districts and the way setbacks apply to them. And it's creating additional issues that we can just clean up in the ordinance that, that aren't really necessary to, to send to the zoning hearing board. Um, or to have Chelsea struggling over them. Additionally, I know that at least a couple of supervisors have talked about I need to have more apartment uses. Um, and then even, I, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but you know Clarence's uh discussion earlier this evening, um, if depending on the timeline, you wanna move forward, if there's a desire to, to implement some or, or, or all or any of it. Uh, that we could fold that, that into it too. Um, so this is really intended as a discussion tonight. I'll just make sure with Scott, did I, did I miss anything that you want to add on to? And I, before, before I do that, I just wanna compliment Scott and Chelsea through this process. Um, Chelsea did, did a lot of the, the, the work to pull this all together based on pages and pages of notes that I know I had, um, and I'm sure, sure they had on, on their end. So it's an incredible job by, by staff on that. And I'll talk a little bit more about your staff and my end-of-year comments that I like to make later in the meeting. But um, thank you to, to both of them and, and for Ray uh keeping this, this on, on task so we could get this to you at this point.
Was this a sales pitch for raises or something like?
I, I don't get any kickbacks, so.
You are very intuitive, Dave.
Yeah, so um, we provided a document late today. Yeah, um, it's, it's time. We gotta keep going. Um, uh, staff provided a document to the board late today, just kinda putting some bullet points again. This is not a um, this doesn't capture everything that's in there, but there are some things in here that we do need. And uh, I know our department wants to talk about, um, the biggest one is signage. Um, just a little bit of background for everyone who was either paying attention in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-two or, or now. Um, signage was a big component of the update. You know, at the time, Chris and I went through how many variances we had. And at the time during those, during those meetings, there was no, no want to actually increase those signage. That we actually wanted to be a little, we wanted to keep them the same. So we kept them the same. What did that do? We created more variances for signage on the Carlisle Pike for everybody wanting it. So at that time, we were told leave it the same, maybe re-clarify what is a wall sign or a flat wall sign. A business sign and a freestanding sign. We did that. However, it still created challenges for signage. So with that, we've developed a couple of options on how to propose these wall signs. In there, you'll see two options. If you want to get into it, we can kind of get into it and how we want to calculate that. Ultimately, I think our sign ordinance is very lacking compared to our neighbors. I know there's a want from some people that to actually increase the signage. I know there's a want to keep it the same. I think that we really need to expand this. Our sign orange has not been touched in years since almost the early two thousands. Signs are bigger, buildings are bigger and we are getting hammered with variances. So what we have said is we have two options here. So one option is actually increasing the size right now. Right now, a business on the Carlisle Pike has a max of seventy five square feet. If you think about a seventy five square foot sign on a two hundred or one hundred storefront, foot linearly wise. It's a tiny sign and they're coming and they're constantly coming to zoning hearing board. So the option one would mean that we would increase the wall sign square footage from seventy five to two hundred. With a minimum of fifty. Now, what that means is that for every. For every one point five linear feet of the building, you multiply that and that's how big you get. But you start at fifty and then you can keep going higher. So we have a little thing on here that says, you know. For Kohl's, for example, we'll take Kohl's, everyone knows where Kohl's is. They have about three hundred and twenty. Three hundred and twenty linear feet of storefront. So that means they would be maxed out. At two hundred each for two of their signs. So they got one on the front side and one on the side where you go in.
I thought you said one point five.
Yeah, so, so take your, take your three twenty, but you get two. So you get two, so.
So then you have to divide it by two then, because it's the maximum square footage, right?
So maximum at two hundred square feet, right? But it's three hundred and twenty times one point five.
Yeah, I came up with four eighty, yeah.
Right. No, we don't. Not from Tyler.
If you get involved Tyler, they'll be having four thousand eighty square feet. So, you know, I came up with four eighty. So then do we divide that by two? Because that's the maximum. Okay, so they can do two forty. Is that right Tyler? Okay.
You sure you want to ask him? Cause I, cause I check these numbers.
But Tyler double checked it, I heard.
So that's the one option, right? You're doing that. The other option is what we are thinking about doing is actually doing a percentage of the square. No, we might lose Tyler here, but we're doing a percentage of the square feet of the wall. So if a wall, right, your wall is three hundred and twenty feet long, but it's twenty five feet high. You take that square footage and then you take three percent of that. I'll tell you what.
Ninety two.
Uh huh.
Is that right? Okay.
Right. So you would take that percentage and then, but because we're taking a percentage rather than the actual storefront. We're saying that the maximum would actually be two hundred and fifty for the sign. Because you're, if you're taking wall projection, it's usually gonna be a larger building. So we give them an extra fifty square feet.
And then we multiply by one ten, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nice.
Alright, so I don't need an answer now. We, I can explain the math again for anybody that needs it. And we can go over that, but that's something we need to think about because we're not increasing the amount of signs that you could have. But we are increasing potentially the size. Now. There are some caveats with this. One zoning hearing board case that we've had recently was with the Sevenbrow. They wanted multiple signs because they had multiple access drives and they felt as though they should have more signs. Because they have more visible area from roads. Ultimately, they did not get that due to the zoning hearing boards decision. They didn't fight it. They went with it. But it started to make us think about, you know. The outbuildings in front of Kohl's. They have multiple sections. They have multiple areas. So we were thinking, why have them come back in for an extra sign if they do have that extra road? So there are caveats for that. I know there's, you know, things about that. But we do feel as though if someone has more frontage and more advertising area, they should be, they should be recognized for that. That's, that's our opinion on that. So that's something that, that we can discuss with those options.
It's also a safety issue, in my opinion. I don't love signs, but signs are important on a road like the Carlisle Pike. They stop accidents or they, they minimize accidents if people can see where they're going.
Yeah, I mean, so that's kind of those, another big one with signs is directional signs. Currently, we allow six directional signs at two square, two square feet. What we're looking to propose is to separate out freestanding and wall mounted directional signs and adding two more wall signs for directional. We are seeing more businesses with pickup and drop off areas and mobile direct. So we are thinking that because of this new change globally with just supply. I think we should have some more directions. I think, you know, go this way, go that way, pick up here. I think they are fair now. Directional signs can be, you know, arbitrary in saying, you know, deli here, you know, you're pointing there. But we can work through that. So I think directional signs are big ones. And then the last one for signs is canopy signs. Right now, we have no provisions for canopy signs. For instance, the sheets canopy. So on the sides, that's actually around on the gas. So we actually don't have a, we actually don't have a provision for that. So we're actually giving a. Giving a option for one canopy sign per side of the canopy at twenty percent. So twenty percent of how big the canopy is, that's how big your sign can be for marketing.
Are we going to forward all these to the zoning hearing board? Cause they're gonna be the ones that deal with it often to get their feedbacks.
So.
Before we.
Yeah, the, yeah, just like it'll be a public document. If you want us to send it to the zoning hearing board specifically, we can. I believe the MPC says that we send it to the planning commission and everybody else. But if you guys want us to do that, we can.
The only reason I say that, they deal with the variances and dons here. I think that they ought to, each member get it in a packet and maybe.
Absolutely.
And then you guys do a presentation there and they can maybe.
We can.
Give cut feedback.
Yeah, we can provide those. We can provide that to that if that's what you guys want to do. Like I said, we're just trying to get. We're just trying to get to a point where we can codify. We understand the public's want for codification, but. There is a cost to that. There are updates coming. Just because we codify and we make this change. It does not preclude a developer or someone else to come in for a text amendment that will need to be changed. We can't stop text amendments. We can't stop changes that come through the MPC, but this does get us to a point that we could draw a line of codification.
Scott, I've never, I've never quite understood why when a change happens, are we not able to add to the, to the E codes as we, as we go, you know?
We can, but we're at the point of right now, the E code version that's on there is the old version.
Right.
When we codified, right, we got hit with four different text amendments right after that and challenges. So that's why we never put it up on.
So like.
Odd for.
So let's say we codify and then, you know, come April, we add a text amendment. Are we able to immediately re-codify at that point? Do we have control over that?
Yeah, we can, we can. Yeah, we can build that in. Now, now that, now that we're at a point, right, there'll be it. Now, I will say this, I've said this publicly. I've said this to many people that ask. New laws is on a section of the E code that shows every single new amendment. So E code technically is up to date. It is just not the version that is the four fifteen version. You have to go to the PDF version. Just.
I, I think it would be wise if going forward, when we change something, we all are, instead of letting it get where you have six hundred things and then you gotta try to go through. Then we can keep it. And not only that, for the residents, if they get on and they want to see them, they know that's the Bible.
And prior to the twenty two update, we did do that, but the ordinance was not updated for twenty five years. That's why we went through that. You know, our ordinance went from two hundred and eighty some pages to three hundred, three hundred and seventy two, and I think we're back up to three sixteen again. So it's a lot of pages, but once we get to a point, we can do that. Some other things on here. Let's, Harry, you have a question about.
Yeah, I do. Let's say we're in the process of passing it to. Zoning.
Yep.
Okay. And we're also in that process of advertising.
Yep.
Is there a way that we can, instead of reading three hundred pages, I'm sure everyone's gonna read three hundred pages. Is there a way to maybe like say, okay, on page such and such, it was changed to this?
So. One, you guys usually get it. There, Sean builds a whole entire thing for public review. Now, we do have a cheat sheet here. But once we have the changes, you know, that we want to do, then yes, we can put something together.
That would save someone reading the three hundred pages and then, you know, maybe not reading through.
Right.
I have a question. Sean, when you do that, how do you know, like, when we do that, that you're not missing something in another portion? Is there like a computer program you run where anything that relates to that, it pulls it up out?
Yeah, we, we do, we do searches of the document to make sure the references are correct and definitions are, are matching up and words are being used consistently.
So that pulls up everything that you can look at and say, well, we need to adjust that as well. Cause I don't want a discrepancy where maybe in this section, it's not updated, like it's missed. I mean, is.
Right.
Yeah, there's track changes on there.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what we do. To the, to the, the other point that was just made, I think for, for supervisor Cotts more. If you really want to understand what's happening in the ordinance, the red line version that you have right now. Is the easier one to understand everything, right? Because you see what's being changed. You can see it in context. What happens when I put this into an ordinance that, that actually makes these changes? You don't see all the context to it. You see section, whatever number is being changed from, you know, certain language with. With lines through, through what's being removed and underlines under what's being added and the context isn't there. So the, the real, if somebody really wants to understand what's happening, you take the, the full red line version. It's a lot to, to read through. But really, it's kind of highlighted where the changes, changes are. So you don't necessarily have to read through the whole thing. But you then also have the option of, well, there's this change being made, this word, what does this mean? And I can go back to the definition section, maybe that's already defined.
Yeah, I, I just would like to make it less complicated for the public. Because I know they're busy, they have their jobs and family and stuff and less complicated so that they understand exactly what, you know. What they're reading or need to read.
Yeah, and I think Scott's sort of summary cheat sheet there probably goes a long way with that.
Let's, we'll, you know, we'll, if this was kind of meant for just for us. But, you know, we can make it a public document if the board chooses to. We might want to make some edits of this one, just so it cleans up some. Some grammatical stuff.
I thought the summary that you put together, Scott and Chelsea was excellent.
Yeah, I can't.
Something like that for the public.
I can't take, I can't take a lot of credit for that one. Chelsea did a lot of that. I was in a lot of, I was in a lot of meetings today. She did a lot of that.
So the other thing, I, I read through the red line and I got through that document with the red line in about an hour. So I, I, it wasn't that bad to go through the red line.
Right. I have a couple more things to highlight just real quick. There are some definition changes that are big for us. Structure, height versus building height. There's some changes to the yards that Celester Schultz brought up. There's some uses, you know, it's been communicated that. That warehousing would go back to conditional use from the change from twenty twenty two. That's, that was a new add from what Chelsea and I had. I understand that's the board's decision. I will say this. There was a reason why we did that, right? To, for existing warehousing to not be a non-conformity. So I just want to put that on the record so you guys understand that for any expansions that are happening for any other warehouses. No. No, what, no, because they would have to expand. If they were doing expansions, they'd have to go through a conditional use. So. With that, there's also some things with separation in the M U B with, with residential stuff. There's also some building codes and one that came here that was pretty big was ponds. If your pond was a certain square footage, you actually had to make it a manmade lake and go to D E P. So we're kind of making that a little easier if people want to coipon. And I think that's really, really it. With kind of the high level stuff that we've done. So if there's any more questions on the document, you know, Chelsea and I, you guys can give us a call or we could finalize some things. Adding, if you guys want to add Clarence's woodland, just let us know. Like Solicitor Schultz said, this is gonna be dictated how fast you guys want to do this. If we want to go. Nitty gritty into this, it's gonna take longer. If not, then we can go with what we have and then go from there.
Yeah, we just want to make sure the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
That's, that's the goal.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, I think Mr. Franklin wanted to say something earlier, but.
Yeah, you can come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, just a couple of comments regarding Scott and Chelsea. Again, speaking on behalf of the zoning hearing board, they have been fantastic. They are just wonderful, the best people to work with. With regards to some of the things that we've seen in variances, there's three types of variances. We get a lot of signs, setbacks and impervious coverage. Scott brought up some good things about signs, but Scott, what you don't hear and what nobody else except the zoning hearing board hears. Is what we talk about back in deliberation. So. What I would suggest. Come to the members of the zoning hearing board and just say, what's your thoughts? What are your input on this? If you don't do that, you're missing on an opportunity to get some additional input that you may not have thought of.
Right. No, yep. And I think we've had many talks afterwards about signs and I think collectively. There, I think collectively among the entire board, we're lacking in square footage. I think collectively, we've, we've agreed on that.
I think impervious is another one that you guys get pounded on. I think you ought to seek input from them on that.
We, we, we've had meetings with five or six requests for impervious coverage. A lot of them come from specific developments to the point where we've almost developed standards for what the allowed impervious coverage is.
I'll get to impervious, but just to close a loop on signs, I think, I think we could agree that most of the board agrees that seventy five. Was lacking. It might not be two hundred, it might not be two fifty or the way that we have. But I think collectively, we've agreed that seventy five is what's causing a lot of the variances.
I will let you know when I disagree with you.
Okay, well, I, I think.
That is, that is correct. So, but anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. Um, to go to impervious coverage is the only thing that I will say about that is that with Stormwater management now and the different regulations that we have. With the code that gives open space and gets allotment. With this new ordinance that we have now, we have not had a residential subdivision go through with the new impervious coverage. That we have and also the new R L M O, resource management land use ordinance. That gives a little more impervious coverage, but also asks. That gives a little more impervious coverage, but also asks for a little more open space. Most of these impervious coverages are the old uh, C S O, the Conservation Subdivision, or you see him at Walden that. We maxed out at fifty percent um, on these lots. So we can look into that, however. What we hear from residents is that no matter even if it's fifty percent, somebody's gonna want fifty five percent because they want, want them there. Uh, you know, they wanna develop their land as they want to. So we can look into that, but it's gonna be very tight, especially if we're trying to counterbalance. Stormwater, open space and impervious coverage.
But I'm sure they see a pattern. I'm sure that.
Yeah, in the old subdivisions, absolutely.
Yeah, I think, you know, sometimes the more sets uh, ears and eyes on something in mind.
Yeah, I mean.
Give you something beneficial.
Right, and the other thing we talked about, right? Bringing back twenty twenty two. Well, what Chris and I put forth was actually trying to limit the building size, the primary building size. Because what was happening was um. The builders are building out to the most that they can, especially in Walden and some, not to pick on Walden, but we tend to get a lot in Walden. Um, those lots are tiny, they're fifty percent. Somebody wants to maximize the size of the house in there, and we've had cases in there that they couldn't even put a back step. To go outside the deck. Um, and now they have a wooden board on their brand new five hundred thousand dollar house. That they can't even go out because they built. Now, they did choose that model, they did offer that model. However, that's, that's the way it is. So there is an option if we want to open this again, that. We could put a primary structure impervious and then have an allotment for the accessory. But that's really tearing into this, so we can do that, but that wasn't the direction that we got in twenty twenty two. That's why we didn't change that.
Scott, couldn't we do something where the structure can only be a percentage?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah, so like the primary structure, so your, so your house, right? Could only be, if you're allotted fifty percent, the house can only be thirty five percent. And then the rest of the fifteen percent can be accessory or outside of that. There, there are, there are ways that we can do that, but that would be rewriting the R L M O uh, ordinance and doing some other stuff. Which wasn't the direction we got in twenty two.
But that, that'll actually push bigger lot size too.
Potentially, yeah, we would have to, we'd have to go bigger to lot size, which means, yeah, there, there's a whole slew of things that we could do with that. Yes, it's possible. We have a question. Do you wanna, Carl, do you wanna?
Yeah, sure. Who, who do we have?
Ricky.
Ricky, if you wanted to uh, take the mic there.
Um, can you hear me?
Again?
Okay, um, so I just, two really quick things. First is um, a request. Oh geez, sorry, hold on. Okay, sorry. Um, first, I stopped my screen share and the TV came on. Um, first would be a request for sharing publicly. I think the cheat sheet sounds amazing. But I'm also wondering if you can make the red line document available as well. Um, I think the public probably. You know, different people would like to look at different deliverables there. So a cheat sheet and redlined document. I think covers the basis of being transparent with the community. Um, and then the second thing I was gonna say. For something as major as making, you know, changes to ordinances like this. I'm wondering if, if it can, if we can do more um, in alerting the public beyond just posting on our website. Um, so maybe this is the opportunity to say like, hey, we're going to be discussing some changes to the zoning ordinance. Like, check out our website here to see what's being proposed. Come to this upcoming zoning, zoning hearing meeting. Um, to engage in the conversation, you know, and then this will be the planning commission meeting and this will be the zoning. Or sorry, the board of supervisors meeting, like, I think that everyone in this room is obviously engaged. There's, you know, a small subset of people who are getting alerts from the township, but there's a larger, larger group of people who just wouldn't know. And this feels like a really good opportunity to show that you all do want community engagement. Um, by sending out a mailer and just giving some really straightforward information to get people aware and involved if they wanna be.
Great, thanks Ricky.
Yeah, um, so for the board, if there's changes, I would ask that we don't put anything of the, we can put the red line today if you would like. And we could timestamp it, but I do wanna say this publicly, so it is on the record. It, with the changes that are coming, it will be a fluid document that will be changes. And when there is a new change, we can post that, but I, you know, if someone sees it a day before. And then we change it the day after, you know, just be mindful that the document will be changed, the document will be looked at by us. Um, so just, we'll try our best to put a draft and a date stamp on it. Um, just so that you know which one it is, but I just wanna say that. Um, sometimes documents are online and on our website, they may not be the best, so just reach out so that we can get you the best one. Um, I just wanna say that.
Okay, maybe we put a note on there in red, something more letters that.
That's the, and the other part is, you know, when we did the zoning orange light, right, when we did the comprehensive one. I think most of us in this room saw how long it was when we did the committee meetings. It took three years to do that. So um, I don't want this to take three years. Um, so. Um, but I do agree, if you guys will do what the board asks, if you want us to put certain things on the website, just let us know what you want on and we can do that. Um, but um, and you know, I, I think I saw a majority of nod heads for this to go to the zoning hearing board. So we can add that once we get to um, what, get to a draft. So that brings up my next question. Do you want this? Obviously, there's options in here, you guys need to read them, so I would just ask to get some type of direction on if we're close. And then do you want us to go to the zoning hearing board and planning commission with what's here now? Or do you guys want us to wait until we get a consensus? And then work things out, because that's gonna all deal with timing here. So I, I would just, I think staff would just wanna, some type of direction of what you guys want us to do.
What would make more sense if you took what you have now?
Provided to them, make comments and then you can make.
And then incorporate that as opposed to have it. It sounds like that would make double duty if you had to.
Okay, yeah, we can uh. Um, I think Ricky has another question. Uh, good, Ricky.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to follow quickly. Um, Scott totally hear you on that. Um, I, I think there's probably wa- like ways to brainstorm how to um, post a red line document. But while making it really clear to the public that it is a draft and that there will be updates. Um, for example, just something that quickly comes to mind, if you do this type of, you know, awareness alert. You can encourage people to sign up for the listserv. Um, in, in that call, as one of the call to actions. And then on the draft, you can say like, sign up for the listserv to know when we have posted a new version of this. And whenever you go through a feedback round and make changes and upload a new document, it's just a quick alert that says, hey. We just wanna let you know, there's a new draft online, it's date stamped X Y Z. Um, I, I think.
I think, I think the majority is that most of the public don't sign up for updates, right? So once we do post these, it will go to the people that update. Um, now, um, I think I'm getting a couple nods here from the supervisors that will put something on the website. So just give us some time on um, on that um, to figure out exactly what we're doing.
All right, thanks Scott, thanks Ricky. Anything, appreciate it Scott, that was very helpful. Thanks for going through that. Does the board have anything? So um, I'm not sure what the motion would be at this point. So sort of Schultz, if you could help us out, I think we're. Kind of looking for feedback and discussions.
Yeah, I think it's just discussion, so you don't necessarily need a motion at this point. Um, I think the direction to, to uh, move it on to the zoning hearing board and get additional. Input doesn't need a motion.
Right, okay.
Pass that on.
Right, I appreciate that.
One quick thing, so the planning commission, it's on you, planning commission meets January second. So we can put that on the January second uh, agenda for them to look at what we have now. We won't change it from now. If that's what you guys want us to do, and then we'll put it on the zoning hearing board. Agenda for discussion in January as well, and then we can come back. Um, I mean, that only gives us, it only gives us about thirteen days for comment from the zoning hearing board. And so we can put it on the January, was that twenty second? January twenty second board um, for discussion again. Um, but just know that we might not get entire feedback from those committees, so we might have to push it to February and this goes back to the timing, so.
Okay, all right, thanks Scott, I appreciate it. All right, I think we're wrapping up that item. Last call, any input? All right, thanks again Scott. Let's go to Hemp Bridge discussion.
Uh, so we had a number of people in a conference call last week, uh, included staff, uh, Kinsley. And also school district. Along with uh, Pendot and I think K C I was also on there. Um, what's in front of us today is that Kinsley has, is committed. Barring uh, nothing above and beyond, that they could possibly have that bridge usable and open. By twelve thirty one. I was out there today. Um, they're still confident that that will happen. Um, as to be expected, uh, there is a significant amount of calls starting to happen. Um, there was, to, to go back a little bit, there's some history, so everybody is aware. There was good discussion a year ago that maybe we don't open it if the Hemp Boulevard is gonna have, have a simultaneous construction. Why open a bridge, but you can't because the road's closed. And it's closed because there's construction on it. The latest information we've received about any sort of construction on that road is late spring. Even early summer, April, May. So the recommendation that we would like to bring to the board is, given that information. Is that we would like to open that bridge and let it operate for it looks like what appears to be about four plus months. With the caveat that we're all clear, that even if they don't get knee deep into the Hemp Boulevard complete construction. There may be some flagging situations when they do driveway cuts into the Costco. But we are, we, we just believe leaving it closed for four months. Um, it, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough situation. Um, and, and they, they are gonna have, their, their answer to us is, they'll have to seed and uh, put some top soil on in the spring. They may, they said they may have to come back if they have to do any slight modifications and do a little bit of milling and then uh. And then put some top back over it. But they are, they are ready to go according to Kinsley. Now, the only other thing is, if it's not twelve thirty one, I just will say, it, it's gonna be really c- close here. Twelve thirty one, one four, it's, it's right around the corner. And um. We just wanna bring in front of the board as to the excitement to that and then the challenge to that. Dave?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, even them doing construction on the Boulevard, there's nothing they can really do. This is like the off season, you can't do asphalt really work other than maybe base installation. Um, you know, you have forty and rising. You know, I don't know what we gain by letting it close. It makes no sense. And I thought we were gonna let, we, we couldn't let them do the work cuz you have properties in between.
Yeah.
Bridge and where they were working. It makes no sense. I didn't know that that, anybody even proposed that, but.
There's also another face to this. I think it, there was a time also, Dave, where the reason it might have got closed is there's also a major gas line on that road. And there was discussion of doing the Boulevard, relocate the gas line. And the information we received was, the gas line will probably be a twenty twenty six project. And twenty twenty five would be the Boulevard or the roadway.
Yeah, the thing is, with that gas line being moved, I don't want any asphalt work done in that area. Why cut the road after you, you do it? They're gonna have to probably open cut that.
Yes, they are.
Makes no sense. I mean, you do something and then end up cutting it.
Yeah. So we're gonna, I was out there today, you saw the pictures. Um, uh, we're gonna be, we're in touch with them. Uh, they sent us a note actually yesterday and said we were good cuz they were gonna go ahead and, and do um. Uh, the last section where they were gonna put the concrete down and uh, cure it and then just do all a lot of ancillary items. So what we wanna just say or share with the board is, if indeed Pendot is okay with opening. Cuz it's passed all the inspections, we as a staff would like to suggest that we open um, that bridge. When available and when authorized to do so. And we believe that date would be right around twelve thirty one.
When are they planning on doing base installation for the road asphalt work? Because the temperatures are to plummet. Here, starting, I think.
Yeah, so Pendot authorized them to pave this week. They paved the north side yesterday. And they're geared up to pave this, I'm sorry, they paved the south side yesterday. They're geared up and Pendot authorized them to pave tomorrow, the north side. So all paving will be done by tomorrow.
We hit forty degrees.
So the Pendot is overseeing this project and they went through all the Pendot requirements to get clearance from.
I mean, yeah.
Do as I do, do as I say.
Yeah, well, yeah, but it's, it is, you know, it's obviously uh, funded, funded grant. And um, they are there on site and they are inspecting it.
Yeah, I understand, but I know what the regulations are and that's why I was concerned if they did not do the paving this week. There could potentially be a long stretch where, albeit that it's based that.
Right.
You're not gonna meet the minimum requirements for.
Yeah, when I talked to the foreman today, he, he then confirmed again that tomorrow they are finishing up the north side and they're done.
Are we talking about some kind of official opening or are we just gonna take the signs down and the roads open?
The Pendot would take the signs down.
They take the detour sign down and that bridge would officially open.
We're not having a ribbon cutting or something like that. I'm kidding, but I.
No, I, 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 I don't know if we would have one on December thirty first, but we might wanna consider to have one when it's nicer out. But I just, as long as everybody's aware, um, and the school is absolutely in agreement. Um, you want, they'd like to see it open. Um, you know, they're, the only thing that they said is, if for some reason, um, the hemp property required. Closure of the road, don't do it in May when you're s- four weeks away from school. Wait to let it, let school get done and then do your, do your modification.
And it might not be a bad thing with that gas line needing, needing moved to ask them to do it in two phases. So that it gives the gas company time to move that section there that we're not disturbing if it's done to do. From the pike so far back, then also you don't run past the start of school potentially with the work. Then we break it down into smaller sections and, and work it from there.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm sure H S S is working with Rockefeller in terms of timing and permits and. Road improvements and the Boulevard, et cetera, so um, I do know Costco is on a, um, I'll call it roadrunner speed. Um, and they're, they're uh, they're, they're gonna be moving aggressively here turn of the calendar. So, so the board is good with it and we get uh, authorization from Pendot that it has met all the specs. Um, and that bridge can open, um, we will open that bridge on the date that it's authorized to be open. So just wanted to make sure, uh, we wanted to verify, and if that's the case, it will be a very exciting day. Um, for many people, it's been what, seven plus months.
Merry Christmas to the people that live there.
Yeah, and a happy new year.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Tyler.
Uh, I'll, I'll say real quick that, I mean, I know there's frustration with the residents over that bridge when we did sample bridge. When we did the sample bridge, road reconstruction coupled with Pency. But I will say this, like, for years, and, and I'm not knocking previous boards, there was a kicking of the can down the road. For a lot of these projects and the, these infrastructure items are in dire need of being done. So now, instead of having them spaced out, we have them clustered tight together. Woods Drive Bridge will be another one. It won't impact that many people and the detour is not as long, but if things would have been done paced out. We wouldn't have had the situation that we have now where a lot of this is requiring being done due to bridge deterioration.
Yeah, I, I wanna echo what we've been talking about as an organization um, of aggressive posture. Yeah, I, I wanna echo what we've been talking about as an organization, um, of a grush of posture on these grants. You mentioned three key pro- projects. This project, sample bridge itself, and then sample bridge road, which is a private-public partnership, and then the other two bridges were, were funded by county, and this one's kind of funded by the federal government. But if you add these all up in dollars, and we didn't have this additional grant funding, this is a ten, these are ten, probably ten million dollars of infrastructure work that we would have had to take from other sources to pay for. So, I can't stress enough that when we get people who are willing to pay for our infrastructure, we gotta find a way to make it happen. Um, but you are right, those are three key projects in the last five years that we got done, and it's a really big wins for us.
I remember us applying for that federal money for this bridge.
Yeah.
Nancy and I, we were in the old township building. It was like twelve years.
You have a really good memory.
That it took to get it to, to shovel red.
Yep. Yep. This is how long it took, but, hey, we're here, it's exciting, right? And so if everything goes, we, it'd be a great, truly, um, a happy new year for us to open that bridge. So just wanna share. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Appreciate it. All right, we'll keep moving. We have, uh, MOU with Pency that is not ready, so we'll look for a table on that.
Motion to table the MOU with Pency.
We have a motion to tables, or a second?
Second.
Nancy, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any, that motion carries. Engineering update, Mr. Moyer.
Nothing to add?
Well, good.
I know, this is, uh, I did wanna note, I'll.
Don't talk, you cost us money.
I'll, I'll note it now, instead of later. This is the, uh, least I've spoken since becoming the township engineer six and a half years ago, so.
Don't let it happen again.
Yeah, well, I, I'd love it if this could continue, yeah.
Thanks, Aaron. All right, we'll look to close out with some final comments. We'll start with staff. Scott, anything else? Thank you. Willetta? Ditto, all right. Amy? Glenn, anything?
Call number one thousand for the year.
Wow.
One thousand for the year.
First in the county, wasn't it, to hit a thousand? Second.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, and add in these with a paid driver and all volunteers, so.
Awesome.
All the manpower, the hours, the reports, you're in report.
Thank you, Glenn. I appreciate that. Tyler?
Nothing here, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl? All right, Bill? Wonderful, chief. Can you top that?
Hope everybody has a horrible holiday, cuz I'm a Grinch. Uh, this past Saturday was our tenth, um, shop with a cop. Uh, thanks in, uh, very large part to our business advisory council and, and their donation. We, uh, treated thirty students from the Cumberland Valley School District to shopping at Walmart. They got to have breakfast at, uh, New Kingston, uh, which is fantastic. They do a great job there for us. They got to tour the firehouse and the fire trucks and cop cars. Then we caravanned into Walmart, shopped for about an hour and a half, and really did some damage there. Filled up the new trailer that we got this year, brought it all back, wrapped everything. They got lunch, thanks to Chick-fil-A. And then they were sent home also with a gift card from Giants as well, so they get, uh, the family gets some groceries, and the kids get some presents that are wrapped and unwrapped, cuz they always have to keep a couple out for themselves too, so. Uh, but it was fantastic, uh, day. Wanna thank, uh, township staff showed up to help wrap, and that was fantastic as well. It's thirty kids and a whole trailer full of, uh, toys is a lot of wrapping, so, uh, we're grateful for all of that, so.
Great. Thanks, chief. Appreciate it. Solicitor Schultz?
Just say, one, I know you were applauding the thousand calls because the, the fire company responded to that, and they were, were there for you, but it's kind of an odd thing, right?
Yeah, nothing you wanna celebrate that, right?
But it's like any firefighter, right, Glenn, any, any firefighter, you kinda, you don't want people to have the, the, those calls, but you're happy when you can, you can respond and be there for people, so, um, you know, kudos, kudos to New Kingston for, for, uh, for being there for the people of Silver Spring. Um, I was like, at the end of the year, um, to kinda look back, it's been a busy year, uh, for the township. I had a meeting with township staff this week where we went through twenty-one issues that they needed me to address. Um, we, we addressed as many as we could on the spot, um, but it's, uh, it's, it's always a pleasure, uh, to, to work with the staff. I think it's a variation of things I've said before that I, I wish all the residents could see, uh, the sincerity and diligence, uh, with which this, this staff works on, on all the issues. Um, every, every single one of them, uh, here tonight, and those who aren't here. I know Chelsea would have loved to, to have been here for the zoning ordinance discussion.
Well, make her listen to the tape.
Um, but it's, i- it, it makes working as solicitor, uh, much, much easier when staff is that engaged and, and trying to be as forward-looking as possible. And it's true of each and one of, each and every one of the supervisors too. Uh, I mean, you see the sincerity, um, with which you, you take your, your positions, and as a fellow elected official, it's, it's inspiring, you know, keeps, keeps me as a, as an elected official, um, wanting to do more for my community too. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you, Shaw. Thanks for sharing. Ray?
Um, Scott, early happy birthday. I knew you wanna get out of here. Um, yeah, just to share something a little humbly, I, I, we shared it with the board. Um, I'd like to thank all the staff for putting together, um, we sponsored a family within the Cumberland Valley School District, and it was really, uh, it was heart-touching, and, uh, I just wanna say thanks to everybody who did that. Um, uh, Scott and, and, uh, Chelsea, I know you're not here, I just wanna publicly acknowledge, um, Scott, while you articulated everything very well, it doesn't do it justice for the, I would just call it, several months of really, really hard work that you and Chelsea did. Um, so I wanna publicly say thank you for the effort you made on that, along with Chelsea. It is, um, I, I, I've, I came into it kind of in the fourth quarter, and you guys had, uh, you guys had had a lead in the game, and you did a great job finishing out, and we'll see where it all ends up, but just wanna say publicly thank you for that. Uh, to the board, uh, you should be proud of the people who work here, um, the work that we do with the staff that we have. Um, every year, um, it, it ceases to amaze me that we accomplish a list that we don't even put half of them up there, and our staff overachieves in every aspect to try to succeed in first and foremost, serving the resident of this community, and two, offering, you know, um, um, safety by our police department and our fire company. Um, there is so much that goes on that people don't see, and, uh, nobody on our staff is looking for a pat. I just wanna publicly acknowledge everything you see, and then everything you don't see, that they do every day. From residents who come in who wanna have a quick chat, to residents who come in and, you know, wanna have a different conversation at the wrong time, at the wrong moment, but every single one of them that staff calls them, responds to them, and, uh, handles it. And that is an absolute tribute to services that we provide this community. So, uh, I know you're proud of the staff. I just wanted the public to acknowledge every single buddy here, and those that are at home, an amazing, amazing year in twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Ray. All right, no- nothing from Aaron? Okay, we'll go to the board to close out. Laura?
I do wanna also mention about staff. Um, there are quite a few really, really good staff members here, um, that work with our volunteers as well as our residents. Um, you do a great job, and I, I really appreciate all of you. It's a pleasure to work as a liaison with staff and, um, just to get to see you, so thank you for that. Um, I also wanna wish everyone Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Laura. Nancy?
Uh, it's all been said, but we do have an amazing staff here. We absolutely do. Every time I walk in here, I'm like, wow, they're all busy and they're all dedicated, and they make us look good, and we are grateful. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you. Harry?
Yeah, I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday and a safe holiday, and be careful.
Thanks, Harry. Dave?
Um, I'm gonna echo that. No matter what your beliefs are, we all believe in the same thing at this time of year. Um, you know, to, to look out for our fellow man, those who are less fortunate. Um, I think we have individuals that, um, do that no matter what their beliefs are, and that's what makes America special, that no matter what you believe, um, it might be a different person that you look to as your, um, higher power, but if you look at what is in each of the writings, it's all the same thing, to be good to each other, and the rules of life, they're all the same, so that's why I think we have to embrace people's differences, because those differences in the end are the same. So with that, whatever you believe in, happy holidays. Um, also, um, I know sometimes people complain about all the businesses we have in the township, but the history of the shop with the cops started with Cops Cares for Kids, when Deb Snyder was the, uh, communities, or the, uh, school resource officer, and it had a humble beginning, and there was more people, there were some individuals there that were in need, and I made a call to a few of the businesses and stopped by a few of them, and that's how this all got started. And they never seem to forget, when you get to that time of the year, that, you know, they remember that there are people out there less fortunate. And so for all the negatives that people think about having industry, retail, any kind of business in this township, they seem like they, they do care about the community that's around them, that are living here. And, uh, I mean, that means a lot to me, and it means a lot that the police department has carried on that tradition, and each year, I think it has expanded and gotten larger, so that says a lot about the people in the police and the businesses. That's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Dave. It's hard to go last and not repeat what's been already said so well, but, um, staff, you do make us proud. I think Ray really said that well. Thank you. Those that are here and those that aren't, thank you for your sacrifice and commitment to the community. Um, to our partners, Sean, Aaron, we throw a lot at you. I think you, you were diplomatic in, in sharing that, Sean. I know, I know we throw a ton at you, so I just appreciate what you guys do for the community as well. And, um, I think that's really all I wanted to share. Happy holidays. Uh, happy birthday to Scott. Uh, maybe you should find something else to do for the party tomorrow. It sounds like you got your plate full, but I hope you enjoy. And, um, I think that's all I have to say. So, oh, one other thing I just did wanna say, um, a lot of familiar faces that engage a lot. Thank you guys for, for coming to a lot of the meetings and engaging, um, some new, some new faces online and things that have also started to engage. Um, it's appreciated. We, we, I think I speak for all of us when I say, um, we're glad for your input and questions, and holding us accountable. So, again, that's all I have. Thank you, everyone. Hope you have a great evening. Any objection to adjournment?
No.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.